Okay. Thank you, Rubio. I mean, to Rubio.
I'm expendable here, so.
I can't see well enough to be the focus. No, no, come here. I've had twenty-five.
Ms. Anderson, Carrie, ready? Okay. We're doing three different things that we're going to do at two o'clock. Special meeting. We're going to follow that with a workshop and at 5:30 there's a time certainly for a public hearing. And so we're going to get all three of those in and I'm watching the clock. So if everybody will just stand to the pledge, we'll open the meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Opening the special meeting and I have some changes to the agenda. Item four is being changed to school support services. Mr. Bishop, human resources, Susan Swain. And we're going to approve some instructional and support recommendations and approve two new principles, okay? And then we'll add another thing to the workshop via athletic update. So any other business that needs to come before the board will move to number five. And I will repeat the fours as we get there. Need a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by Superintendent Himmel?
I move to adopt the agenda. Superintendent Himmel?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers. Second by Mrs. Bryan to approve the adoption of the agenda as recommended by Superintendent Himmel. Are those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes five zero. We do have two citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are reserved for items requesting approval on the agenda or any other subject. And I have two. So I need to read our statement concerning public speakers. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other breaches of respect and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults or tend to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model the following character traits. Cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss nor take official action on any presentation. Any person who is present who wishes to speak must fill out a green card, which are located at the back of the room on the table. And the chair calls the first speaker, Ms. Madeline Chandler.
Doctor, can you make sure that it's down on your.
Madeline Chandler?
Can you hear me?
It's slightly light, so.
If you'll go up to the podium, please, sir.
There are some things you see.
Hello. Good afternoon, but I hope everyone is doing well. My name is Madeline Chandler and I lead student of Alincia High School. And before I start, I do want to thank everyone who responded to my email that I sent. Those who did, we didn't even know they'd been sent. Which is, uh, which not many high schools or high school students can say because often adults try to push aside younger voices. I've been watching the past few school meetings anxiously with the hope that masks would mandatory bond school. The current plan, as you know, would only require a mask if someone is not even three six feet away in a classroom. People want, that isn't enough. We all know that classrooms before COVID-19 were overcrowded and the schools didn't magically get bigger over time. It will be, it will be impossible to keep everyone properly short of distance. And if we continue, and if we place our responsibility onto our teachers, their work will become even more overloaded than it already is. The virus can, the virus can stay at some services for 24 hours and can't help spread COVID-19. Much is unknown about this virus, but what we do know is that masks greatly reduces spread. The only way to go back to what as we once knew it is by stopping this spread and providing the necessary precautions. In my second email, I found out that Florida sent to grade six of one and grade six of three to fund the sanitary nuisance and how it's supposed to be handled. One could argue that a person not wearing a mask is a sanitary nuisance as they have the higher risk of spreading COVID-19. In March, all, in March, schools all across America, including Citrus County, closed down when the virus was small and slowly growing. But when Florida goes up by the thousands daily in July, their requirement of masks is debated. America is somehow politicized as citizens, public safety, and this isn't a political issue and it shouldn't be treated as such. Personal beliefs don't change science and the scientists tell them that if we want to stop this dangerous virus, we need to make the change. And no one likes change and I don't even like change, but if one small action can help see thousands, it isn't worth it. People are fearful right now and there are anti-masters work. People are fearful right now and respond to it with anger. But don't let the anti-masters stop you from making it and working Citrus County. You all are amazing members on this board, but please report a mask to be worn in class at all times. Other this morning, Florida has 433,000 cases of COVID-19 is going up by the thousands. And I'd hate for Citrus County schools to add on to those numbers. And thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And I once again ask you to update the current mask policy to include that mask to be worn at all times in the classroom.
Thank you.
Our next request is from Pamela Haggerty.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to bring to your attention what payroll looks like for your essential workers that are feeding students during this pandemic. Please keep in mind that during these times, workers are putting themselves in harm's way in making contact with families that are going through COVID virus infections and having personal contact with parents and students that may have been infected or have already gone through infections, some having been in hospital situations. We are feeding students by wearing gloves and masks, however, we know this is not a hundred percent protection for us while we're doing this. We're handing lunches and milks by either handing them to the parents and students, putting the meals on the front seats of the car, using trays or boxes to put the meals in and out of cars to avoid contact, or putting the meals in the trunk or back area of the vehicles. We're putting ourselves in the most dangerous position of all jobs in the school at this time. We do this only because, not only for our paychecks, but also we know this job needs to be done to feed our kids. I'm here today to speak with you because I feel we are the ultimate essential worker that are being forgotten and not appreciated. I say that because of the way we're being paid for the risk we're taking to our community. Not only are our monies being held for a long period of time, but also the pay is not equal to risk. All businesses are recognizing the workers that have contact with customers or are either being paid an extra stipend or getting some sort of monetary recognition for the dedication of putting yourself in the COVID risk. We're doing this for our regular pay and we're also being put into a situation where our monies are being divvied out into pay periods that extend into the regular contract year going into September. Please keep in mind this summer COVID feeding started June 4th for me and others and will end August 10th if things continue the way they are today. However, we're not getting our pay for this completely until September 15th. So we're working all summer into the regular school year and not getting completely paid for it until September 15th. During this time, workers are having to drive to work, having to purchase gas, and some are driving 40 miles more to get to work. In summary, I wanted to bring your attention that we're most, the most stressed out workers right now because of COVID and our contact with people. And when we get our paychecks that are divvied into small day-to-day increments that stretch on into September, it feels like we're the forgotten ones, the unappreciated employees that put our health and welfare of ourselves and families at risk for our jobs. I always ask myself when I speak with my staff, at any job I ask them to do, would I do it? Am I asking them to do something that I wouldn't myself do? And I ask you today, would you do it? Would you put your family out there, reaching into cars, face to face with people that you know have had COVID? And then waiting weeks and weeks and weeks to get paid? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brad Hollingsworth.
Good afternoon. Thank you for making this available to us. I don't have a prepared remarks, but I have concerns as a parent of students here in Citrus County. I have children in middle school and high school. And what troubles me is the apparent inconsistent application of the policy with regards to masking. There can be a lot of question about whether or not the science is settled. The rates again this morning, positive testing rates were rounded down by almost a factor of 10 from 88 to nine. And yesterday, and again this morning, the death count was rounded down by 50%. That is not to naysay or diminish the fears and concerns of people that have health concerns over COVID-19. But we've not seen this response for any other disease here in Citrus County or anywhere in the state of Florida. Flu season routinely kills three to 6,000 people a year in the state of Florida. And those numbers are on par with what the death count is for COVID-19, but we haven't seen a response that's just devastated the economy in the way this has. The decision last week by the school board was to exclude second grade and below from the mask policy. At the same time, children are considered the most at risk or at an elevated risk and also for infecting teachers. Yesterday in the paper, the Citrus County Chronicle reported that the Department of Health is now restricting testing for children aged 12 and below. In both instances, the mask exception policy and the test restriction policy was due to concerns that it would just be too difficult to mask the students and too difficult and it was, it was hard on the testers to, they felt uncomfortable testing children the way in which you have to test even for a nasal or oral swab. So the policy seems to be ineffectively applied. Take, for example, the Cantor Citrus High School where you have the elementary school co-located with the other schools. So you have a population of the students that are masked and mandatory and some that are not. And how do you tell this second grader that's eight-year-old standing there to a third grader that is eight-year-old that, well, the difference is you're in second grade, so you have to, you don't have to be masked, but they do. And how you conduct things like sports, band and chorus, or social distancing is not really possible, for example, in an orchestral or jazz band type setting. And they can't wear a mask while they're performing their instrument. These are all things that need and to be taken into consideration and should have. And why I don't feel that masking should be necessarily mandatory for all students if there are exceptions and inconsistent application of the policy. Thank you for listening.
Any other green cards? Seeing none, we will move on to third item Superintendent San Himmel, the adoption of policy 3.232, COVID-19 emergency policy. Face covering, Mr. Bryan, are you going to handle that?
I can start.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Hopefully this. All right. So last week after the emergency meeting, I gave you a draft of the policy that I had prepared and contacted, contacted everyone. I kind of took some notes on the side here because obviously I can't call each of you up and say, this is what one wants to do, what does the other person want to do? And so went through it and had some suggestions from those board members about certain things that they would like to add. And I feel the best way is we can kind of go through the policy. As you know, it's an emergency policy, so the rulemaking process is kind of set to the side because it's only valid for 90 days or less extended. And we can make our modifications here and then go ahead and adopt it. So what I'd like to do is, you know, you voted to make a policy mandating masks. I presented you with a draft, want to have got some feedback from, from you. And so we can go through this and, and try to finalize it, make sure that it's what the, what the board would like. That being said, I did make sure Ms. Counts that that was a comma after employees.
Do you get that cluster?
Yeah. And sometimes when it's underlined like that, it becomes a little, it's a little difficult. I mean, I have printed off one. I know at the, the second sentence, which talks about the Centers for Disease Control advises that people who are infected by asymptomatic or presymptomatic can increase the risk of community spread. I believe previously it said play an important, play an important part in community spread. I had spoken with Mr. Dodd, who had asked that that maybe be a little stronger and offered the suggestion of, you know, increase the risk of community says, or worse, to that effect, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Dodd? So.
Yes.
So if, if that needs any further discussion or if everybody's comfortable with that, we can move further on down the line. And if I go through something and miss something that you wanted to talk about, let's do it now and not get to the end and jump all, jump all the way back up. So if there's no comment on that, when speaking with Ms. Counts, she felt that, apparently I took out some of the stuff, so, no, I did not. So the, the next sentence, which says the use of face coverings by everyone can limit the release of infected droplets when talking, coughing, and/or sneezing. She would like to put a period at the end of sneezing and take out as well as reinforced physical and social distancing. She can explain why she feels that way and y'all can have a discussion.
No, I just thought it was a little bit awkward. I suggested that we say not only do they recommend reinforcement by physical and social distancing, but also a face covering by everyone can limit the release of the infected. So I, I was just putting the reinforced physical and social distancing at the beginning of the sentence, using the not only, but also. But we still need to keep both of them, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's just a little awkward. It's not incorrect.
Explain physical, social distancing. What's the difference?
The same. The CDC recommends six feet.
Why is it called social distancing?
I think that is, I think they, I don't know, you maybe, I don't know why it's called social distancing. I guess because at the beginning of all this, when people are out socializing, they've said, you know, stay six feet away. It may, I think both terms, physical distancing, social distancing, they mean the exact same thing. And I would hate for someone to say, I was socializing, so therefore I was, you know, didn't have to imply.
And I don't know that this has been specifically defined, but social distancing seemed to be six feet or greater or two meters or greater. And physical distancing meant less than that, but still not right there. At least that's, I think that was some of what I've seen in some of the languaging. But I don't think that's ever been like, you know, legally defined or specifically defined. You're not right.
Most of this is based off the guidelines from the, from the CDC. So I need some direction if y'all.
I think those are great. I mean, I don't see any problem on my end.
I think Ms. Counts wanted to reword the last sentence and I'm more than happy to do so.
I just don't, I think both, both items have to stay there. The physical reinforcing, the distancing and the masks. It's just a little, it's not incorrect, it's just awkward.
I need a little consensus.
I think if you include both of them, it's expressing that whether they are less than six feet or more than six feet.
No, I think she wanted to move as well as reinforce physical, social distancing, comma, the use of face coverings by everyone. Is that correct, Ms. Counts?
I said not only physical and social distance, but also the use of the face covering. I moved the reinforced physical and social distancing to the beginning of the sentence.
Not only, but also keep what you're saying.
Yeah.
As well as reinforced physical, social distancing, the use of a face covering by everyone can limit the release of infected droplets when talking, coughing, and/or sneezing. Was that?
I was going to drop the as well as. Not only reinforce physical and social distancing, also use the, use of a face covering by everyone can limit the release.
Yeah, that's, that's Sean's call. You both, I think you want both of those in there, so.
We want both of them in there.
Right. So the wording, the wording on it is your choice on how you would like it, on how you would like it worded?
Well, you say by everyone, so you're, you mean everyone, so that's, also that's everyone.
Well, that's the purpose. That's the, that's the purpose clause. That's why you're doing it. You know, we have a purpose of why we are enacting an emergency policy and that's the purpose of why. And you can make exceptions to it, but you need to define a purpose of why you're doing this. That's, that's a broad statement.
I think we are saying, or at least I thought that we were saying, we still, we still were encouraging it and thus now, or you know, then, like you said, there are exceptions to it, but I do believe we're saying that everyone would benefit by doing it.
Ms. Counts, if you want to tell me, I'll embarrass myself up here for a few minutes.
Um, and Ms. Powers, I'm sorry, if you just, we're getting, we're getting this. Yeah, and you know what? If you point it right at your mouth, maybe that'll.
Maybe so.
And I. Let me, let me type up what you wanted, Ms. Counts, and then that gives everybody a chance to look.
Okay.
I was going to ask you, and I think you've answered the question, but what exceptions? Some medical exceptions, there would be at the KQ2, they're not wearing masks. What are they, what do they do to cooperate in this epidemic?
Well, when we get to that, I know that there was a suggestion to put that they're encouraged to wear a mask, but you were not going to make it mandatory. And we can talk about the medical exceptions when we get to that part, if you don't mind. So that I'll, I'll get lost if we start jumping around.
Yeah. You'll all get lost.
I apologize.
You don't want to get lost.
And so, Ms. Counts, what was your?
Just that the CDC advises to reinforce the use of physical and social distancing.
Reinforce the use of.
Physical and social distancing as well as the use of a face covering by everyone.
Distancing as well. I cannot remember who my typing teacher was in high school, but she would be embarrassed. And it's right now.
It's okay, she's not admitting to.
Those face coverings by everyone.
By everyone to limit the release of infected droplets when talking, coughing, and/or sneezing, period.
To limit. No, I'm in my, I'm in my right here. Wes, you probably had the skips in there.
Yes.
Why are we throwing her under the bus?
I'm not throwing the skips.
Do you not pick on teachers?
I am not.
Not my presence.
I, I tell you, you know, that was long enough ago that typing wasn't as important as it is today. So Ms. Counts asked that I say the CDC advises to reinforce the use of physical, social distancing, comma, as well as the face coverings by everyone to limit the release of infected droplets when talking, coughing, and/or sneezing. Is that good? I like to delete the previous one. Does anybody have an objection?
I'm just, you chose face covering to include everything like masks and.
Face shield, so face, a face shield with their limited use is a face covering? So yes, ma'am. I didn't want to just use the term mask because I think you can narrowly define, you know, I didn't want to limit it just to masks, so it's, it's a face covering. Oop, wait a second.
And I like the use of face coverings because it is the purpose and then we're going to, then we're going to get a little bit more specific about what it is.
Tracking changes of, here's my. All right. Good?
Good.
All right. In the rules, paragraph two, I cleaned up throughout the document. A board member was high enough to point out that I left out, or other persons in some places. So I cleaned that up throughout the, throughout the document. Outside of that, I don't think that there was any other changes. When we got to exceptions, Mr. Dodd, if he, if he can cover this, is he, we have infants, a face covering should not be required for persons younger than two years of age. It said K through two, I changed that to pre-K through two after a conversation with, with Ms. Himmel. Medical certifications, I don't believe there was any.
Just if you'd go back way there, on the pre-K through two, what about?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, but Mr. Kennedy, I got your notes poking out a little.
Note of the hour.
Mr. Kennedy indicated he would like to add that is encouraged, shall not be required, but is encouraged. And so I don't believe, I don't believe anybody has a problem with that, but it is.
All right. Does pre-K, would that include our treasure chest at Crystal River High School? And I never, I know we have a infant up to age two. I just wasn't sure if we had anything in there.
Any, any one up above two-year-old?
Would be considered pre-K? Okay. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Brad, trying to, you were going, are you going to see?
I am. I know that you had wanted an exception in here in regards to if alone in a vehicle.
Right, yes.
But I didn't, I was going to address that at some point in time, but we can address that now when I'm speaking with Mr. Dodd. Because the purpose, the rules, the rules, paragraph two discusses, you know, while any person is basically inside a bus or a vehicle that's leased or owned by the school district, you're required to wear a mask. Mr. Dodd brought up the point, if you're alone in a vehicle, that you should not be required to make, to wear a mask as long as you're occupying the vehicle by yourself. And we had a discussion about it, you know, that's, that's up to you. I don't have a problem with it. It's just things I'm not going to add without getting board consensus from the board.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so let me see here.
We did reference an E, I think it said, or vehicle provided. I don't know if that.
E.
E is in outdoors and then it does reference.
Should not be required for persons outside of any school district building or vehicle provided, that said person maintains from other persons. Can I add it right there?
Yeah.
Or is alone in the vehicle? Is that acceptable?
I guess it wouldn't technically be outdoors for social distancing, though.
But it says persons outs, oh, okay. All right, yes, sir, you're correct, because that's talking about being outside of a vehicle.
Right, I just think of all our employees who are, you know, who may need a vehicle for themselves.
I'm just trying to think of the proper place to put that.
Unless we just.
Can we just take out the word our outdoors? Because we've talked about the school district building or vehicle.
Or outdoor and vehicle.
Yeah, just take, take, just put, just leave it social distancing.
It should not be required for persons outside of any school district building or vehicle, but that's talking about being outside of the vehicle, not when you're alone inside of the vehicle. You know what? I can just, I can add it.
I just added it.
Pull it. Add it as a bullet for Mr. Dodd.
Or just add it, make a new, you know, bring them all down one by one letter? Increase, increase a new letter between E and F?
You know, we'll just, vehicle. It shall not be required to wear a face covering by any person who solely. by any person who solely occupies, occupies a district, bus, or just vehicle, bus vehicles?
I think we should say bus, I think if a bus is empty, then. Or the white fleet, the buses, yeah, all.
Yeah.
I think, but. I think if a bus driver's heading out to start the route, I mean, they should need to have it on until they get a student on there, I think if any of our white fleet individuals in the white fleet are by themselves.
I'm gonna copy from what the rules say above, that solely occupies and.
A school bus or other vehicle home leased or operated by the school board?
Yes. A school bus or other vehicle home leased or operated, operated by the school board. Good?
Yes.
You're good? Okay. Perfect.
On C, I did bring up the healthcare provider, and you gave a good definition, but it might be good just to clarify that for the board's sake.
Oh, I was looking at another document when I was reading the statute.
Oh, you were, okay.
It's defined by statute, though.
Right, the, the healthcare provider is defined by statute.
Right.
Somebody who has the authority to.
Yes. To make a diagnosis.
Yes.
This would basically be one of them. 'Cause they're, and, and, you know, 'cause they're gonna have to make a diagnosis that the person has a medical, physical, or psychological contradiction that prevents the person from being able to safely wear a face covering, so. It's more than.
Is that consistent, the, the term healthcare provider, with where we have elsewhere, where there's medical exceptions being used?
I, in, in other policies.
In other policies.
I believe so, we, I think we refer to them as a healthcare provider or a health provider. The term healthcare provider is defined by Florida statute, though. Can't recite it off the top of my head or anything else, so. Okay. I was speaking with Mr. Dodd, the next thing that I, he made a comment on H, I mean, I guess it would now be I, musical and theatrical performances, and at the end there, as long as social distancing, so it was, you're not required to do it as long as you're social distancing. I think the way it was originally written, that if you were in your band or your chorus class or whatever, inside the classroom, you could take it off to, to do the performance. But he felt that the term is, that they should be socially distancing when they're doing that.
Right.
And I do know that Ms. Himmel had talked a little bit about that previously, about they may need to go outside to be able to, to do that, but.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we put in there, this exception should not apply to singing the National Anthem, but obviously, if a child's going out in the middle of the gym, or in the middle of the football field, or in the middle of wherever the meeting is.
There'll be socially distancing.
Social distancing, they shouldn't have to wear a mask.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that as well, you know, as far as what. I mean, I, I would prefer truly to take that out, because I think it might add some confusion. But if, if we feel, I mean, it said, you read it, you read it for what it is, it says, like, it's not an exception to sing the National Anthem, I mean, you gotta have a mask on. And I don't really care for that, but I know we're saying that if it's social distancing, then.
You know, adding that is fine, to me, that is fine, because I think it's more drafted so that at basketball games, where they're singing the alma mater, or, or anything else, they're all standing in the bleachers, any of you wearing a mask at that point in time, 'cause it will not be socially distancing.
Correct.
So, but I agree with you, that if you want some clarification, you know, if someone's gonna walk out into the middle of a basketball court, volleyball court, baseball field, whatever, you know, pick your poison, and he's six feet apart from everyone, then obviously they shouldn't require it. But I also believe that is also, that part of it is also covered, outdoors with social distancing in E now, so, which says that if you're outside of a school district building or vehicle, so. I understand that the, you, you wanted to maybe put something down there, I think it was covered up above, but for clarification, you know, whatever the board would like to do.
I mean, I get, Mr. Dodd, are you saying, is that whole section really necessary?
Uh, well, from what Mr. Bradshaw, I mean, the intent is really for groups of people singing the National Anthem, or the fight song at alma mater, or whatever.
Right.
Those people are gonna have to have their masks on.
Correct.
Right, it's not really meant to say if an individual is gonna sing the National Anthem, they have to have a mask on, but, so I don't know, I, I think that this exception should not apply to groups singing, I, I don't know, I mean, it just, to me, I don't want it to be misconstrued that we're gonna make a person wearing a mask if they're gonna sing the National Anthem and they're, you know.
If, if you'd like, if you'd like that sense deleted, I mean, what.
Well, I, I was trying to understand how the, the whole section was necessary with, with the other parts of the.
Yeah.
The policy, and whether it, it just confused it, and if it just should be removed.
I think it was, and that, that's fine, and I think the intent was, so when you're in your band class, you can take your mask off while you're playing inside of that class. But if you don't want to allow them to do that, I would remove it, and then it'll only be, it'll fall back up under the other section, which talks about the supervisor can tell you of the classroom, or the activity can, can tell you, you're allowed to remove your mask as long as you maintain social distancing.
So particularly, I'm thinking like a wind instrument, or something, that would be, that makes obviously more sense of why you'd have to do that, where.
Right.
And have that exception in there.
Or even, even, even corps, I mean, it's, it's hard to speak through the mask and everything else, and so, you know, it'll obviously affect the ability to sing.
And I think we had several comments to the music programs that we have, and so I don't, I don't mind signaling it out, and, and I'd like to have those teachers address it, and have some support for not wearing a mask, because if, if they are playing the tuba, they can't wear a mask.
Well, that is very specific that it's not required, so that is basically a pass, unlike the D, which says that if the official's supervising, they can allow it if they social distance. So one is, you, you're not required in that classroom to wear a mask while you're practicing or performing, the other is, if you can social distance, you're giving the authority to the, to the teacher to say, y'all can take your mask off now, everybody's.
So, with, with Mr. Dodd, with your, with your suggestion of the, the social distancing part, that would, it, it seems like, the way I'm reading it, if we add that, then we might as well take the whole section out.
It would moot.
Because it would make it moot. So you'd have to either, you'd either not have to include it, because then it would, otherwise, there's no exception, and the idea is, what you're saying is, if they're playing an instrument, there is gonna be an exception. I, I mean, as an example. I, I'm just thinking, I wanna make sure we under, we're, we're seeing it.
You know, and it is discussed in the school reopening plan later, when we get into that, because that was, you know, one, my, my question is, you know, dealing with chorus and band instruments and singing, you know.
Right.
I wanna bring up a couple of things, when you're talking about H, the musical and theatrical performances, remember some of our chorus classes, and you know their rooms, they may have forty-five, fifty, sixty kids in a room, and that's why we have given direction to our principals, to make sure that these kids can social distance, or some of their practices may be, need to be moved to the gym, outside, those types of things, because, and you know our bands, they all get in there at the same time during the day, and we've got those instruments that are blowing through, so up to you, but I wanna remind you, some of the classes get forty-five, fifty kids in there, and we'll cram them in one room.
But isn't the school reopening plan, doesn't it talk about not allowing them to be in there?
Right.
So I wanna make sure what we have here follows with the school reopening plan. So, I'm not sure, Ms. Himmel, is that, does that conflict, does H conflict with the school reopening plan? I don't think it does, really, does it?
Mr. Dodd, we don't address mask in this, in that part for the musical instruments of the chorus, we just say where they need to have classes, if they're not able to social distance. So all we have in the plan is that we're addressing that there's this policy, and so we just say in the general statement, there's a policy you need to follow regarding masks, but then specifically those pieces, we've addressed having them go outside if they need to.
Right. But, okay, so, yeah, and, I mean, if we just put it like it is, we have a chorus class, and we know how those classes are, I mean, I know, I think it'll want it to be a high school, and, you know, so we're gonna have all these students in there singing. Is the policy that they cannot sing because they're not socially distancing? Or is the policy that if they wear a mask, they can sing? That's what, I mean, 'cause I think what I've read about the risk, the risk is increased for, you know, choirs and singing performances. So, that's kinda my question, I mean, just generally, what is this gonna look like for a chorus class? We say that we've got an exception for a performance.
If, if you remove it, it will require them to wear a mask when they're inside of a classroom unless they can social distance. They can practice outside in social, as long as they social distance without a mask. That was, that's a pure exception for, for musical and theatrical to be able to do it inside.
And then you have that exception about.
Well.
The alma, alma mater and the National Anthem, that, that makes it seem like they can do, they can do the singing, but they can't sing the alma mater.
Well, it, it also, if you read it, it's, it shall not be required for any student, employee, or guest while playing a musical instrument, or performing, or rehearsing a choral or theatrical performance. I would assume that gives leeway so that when they actually do it live performance, then they don't have to wear a mask when they're up on stage performing for the people who will have to be wearing a mask sitting in the audience. But it does say rehearsing, and I would imagine that everything they do from day one is rehearsing for whatever present, you know, theatrical or choral performance that they're working their way towards. So, if you'll just tell me what you want, I can make it happen.
Well, I think what I want is this exception should not apply to singing National Anthem, Alma Mater, or songs performed by students not engaged in playing choral class, I mean, you know, I, I think that that's, doesn't fit with the musical and theatrical performance. And then, or, you all have to give input on the rest of this with the, the other class.
I kind of agree with you, Mr. Dodd, because we're talking about the spectators at sporting events, not being able to sing rather than the, the actual classes, the band classes and the chorus classes. So I, I don't mind taking that sentence that refers to the particular songs out, because that refers to the spectators, not really the, the classes and the performances.
It says by students, those songs performed by students.
Not, not engaged in playing choral class.
So really, if we take it out, then it's covered with, I think your concern, it's covered elsewhere.
It's covered elsewhere.
So I, I think the simplest thing is to just take that out.
Okay, so I'm taking the last sentence out, correct?
That's right.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. All right, what about the first sentence?
I don't know, I just, I just thought there were enough comments at the last meeting with these two particular curriculum that we offer to, to give the, these special attention, because they, they're gonna have to find other places in the school plant, and, you know, there's PE classes in the gym, and there's outside, is it covered outside, is it gonna rain? So we've gotta give them some kind of a.
Well, this is, this is a complete exception while you're playing a musical instrument or performing or rehearsing a chor, a choral or theatrical performance. So, if you don't, if you want to give that exception, you know, raise your right hand, not teaser. But if not, it's covered elsewhere, because you've already given the teacher, or the supervisor of the activity, the ability, once they socially distance, to allow them to take their mask off. That is, that is a, that's an exception. Yes, ma'am.
To put social distancing.
So.
I think what helps, though, about having that in there at this point, with, now that we've, with taking out the other sentence, is it hopefully then gives both teachers and students a clarity that we, we are already exempting that, that activity, like, kinda we do with physical, you know, with strenuous, strenuous physical activity, which I'm assuming is referencing to athletics.
May I suggest something? If you just take out the word or rehearsing, then it's an exception when they're actually doing the, you know, it's an exception when the parents and family and friends are sitting out there in the audience, it'd be an exception not having to wear the mask during that, but.
The musical instrument, though, they can't play it, then?
There, there's an exception, they're not required to during that time, but you're not gonna let them rehearse in class and all.
I'm saying they couldn't, they couldn't rehearse, then, they could, the band couldn't practice.
They have to socially distance. So, but, okay, do you want them to be able to practice in class without a mask, or do you not want them to be able to practice in class?
What does the school reopening plan refer to on that? I thought it referred to that we were gonna allow, the administration was gonna allow for band and chorus to continue.
For music-related course, courses, so for chorus, six to ten feet of separation when singing indoors, otherwise, you must go outside for singing sessions where students can socially distance. And for secondary school bands, six to feet, ten feet of separation when playing inside, otherwise must be outside where students can socially distance. So it really talks about socially distance, and the, the goal is that they are outside if they're singing or playing an instrument.
So then the exception for us that we should grant is when they, when they are involved in a performance, not in rehearsal, would that be, would that be correct, Dr. Heber, as far as if, if we gave an exception to rehearsal, then that wouldn't fall in line with what you just read, would it?
Well, that's for courses, so I think rehearsal is, I kinda think rehearsal would be, I would see that different, because I'm planning to have a concert tomorrow night, so I'm gonna rehearse, so you're doing maybe one rehearsal for the, the concert, so I would think that would fall into that. But the exception would allow them the opportunity to rehearse before they do the actual, but it wouldn't be every single class, 'cause this is really talking about their classes.
So you're talking dress rehearsal?
Yes, I'm thinking of one time, you know, you do, you know, you may, or do a dress rehearsal the day before, I think the exception would allow for the opportunity to do that prior to the event. But it wouldn't be every single, like, the whole nine weeks, for, 'cause they are, many of them, you know, they practice little songs and prepare and everything before, so.
Well, when the bands practice in their halftime show, if they're gonna compete with, for a rating, I mean, that's gonna be rehearsal, right, you know, rehearsing all semester.
Make it while playing a musical instrument, or performing, or during one dress rehearsal.
And Dr. Heber, I'm sorry, did you sit before you?
I, it, to me, it's very simple, I mean, it's, this one's pretty black and white, they can either take their mask off and play on the inside, or they gotta leave their mask on to do it inside, or go, they can go outside, except for the performance part, but that's easy, just take out, you know, or rehearsing.
The, the only concern that I think I have with, with where we're going with it, is, is Mr. Dodd saying, is how it, it blends with the, with the return to band plan. I'm thinking, and I, no, and I, and I know that, that's why I just wanted to make sure we don't box ourselves in one place and out the other. And I, and I appreciate that, Mr. Dodd, 'cause I, I honestly didn't put the two together at that moment. In, in our band rooms, and I'm thinking, it's the ones that I'm familiar with, I, is it realistic that, that they would be able to meet the social distance guideline, or the guidelines here, and have a traditional band rehearsal, because it, it, I, I just, I mean, I'm thinking of the humble of band rooms.
I'm gonna venture to say probably not, when I think of the number of students in that.
They're big rooms, but they're.
Yeah, they're big rooms, but they're not that big.
They're not that big, and when you think about.
So, given what you have here in the plan, and then given our policy, if we restrict with the exception, it gives us the, the policy for, for you to do it, but the plan does not necessarily meet that. So then the question would be, is, does that mean we're not having a band? Because if we pass the policy and gave the exception, you could do it, but the plan's not gonna reflect being able to do it. Or, if we have the plan the way you have it here, then we wouldn't need the exception, it seems like in the policy. Am I, and is that where I'm?
That's what I'm thinking.
And I, I think I'm there, too, so I, I'm, and I'm willing to be as flexible as I can be to make sure we can meet the students' needs.
Here's reality, there's not gonna be a band concert, probably the first semester of school. And I, you know, just to say, our bands and courses. And I, you know, just to say that our bands and courses will not have a big concert, a big theatrical play or anything like that, because we've limited, when you see the plan, y'all have seen that, for the first nine weeks, we've really limited everything for the first nine weeks coming into the schools. So, I think what we might offer as a suggestion is that our principals, with supervisory authority, they could work with their band directors, their chorus teachers, and those students in those classes, to make sure they've got a place where they can practice, because it's already been said when you're singing or talking all the time, you know, your molecules may come out and flow a little bit further or something. So, maybe there's some way we can just tie that back to the one where it says supervisory authority, and I will give you my commitment, there's probably not gonna be any large concerts before December 31st, unless a miracle happens with our numbers.
And let me remind the board, this policy's only good for 90 days, so towards the end of October, it's gonna be, you'll either have, you'll either have to renew it, modify it, or go into rulemaking, you know, the regular rulemaking through advertising and everything else. These are short-term, short-term policies for a reason.
I would say then, if, given what Ms. Hamel's saying, D would cover that, and then why don't we just remove H altogether? I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'm fine with that, Mike. Mr. Bradshaw says this is 90 days, and we're trying to bring as much as possible into the classroom so that we can get on with our education, but we still have to keep the kids protected and safe.
And for anyone following at home, we're not saying that there isn't an exception, it's just that it's gonna fall under the supervisory, and the superintendent is saying there, they would be addressing that, not just there, but in other places.
Everybody fine when we delete this?
Yes.
Yes.
I need to hear something from you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like for us to go back to letter D, where it says, shall not be required for student at the school district supervising the activity. I know you can read, but then it talks about during that, provided that the student maintains physical social distancing, six feet minimum. I know that Ms. Count brought this up several times in our conversation last week when we had our meeting about teachers enforcing the social distancing or the mask or the requirements and those types of things. I went out to the schools yesterday, and we had a few classrooms set up where they taken the, they've removed everything out of the classroom that's not necessary, they've taken the desks from wall to wall, they've got the desks from top to top like five feet apart, so some of the desks may be 5.9 inches feet away. And then from front to front, they've got all the desks facing the same direction, because I think last time when we talked, we talked about students may or may not have to be required to wear their masks all day, every day, in every classroom, and we're doing everything we can to find the classrooms where we can get the kids sitting forward in every classroom, the teachers will be far enough away, teachers will be able to take tape from their desk. I know that, I don't wanna put this burden on the teachers to say that he or she's out there measuring, oh my goodness, it's under six feet, or it's 5.9, and every time that student's foot hits the floor, then the expectation will be that he or she puts a mask on. I do believe that a lot of our teachers will be a mask. I know that our teachers, when, you know, we're getting ready to change everything we do, the small group activities, where we walk through some, and these were high school classes yesterday, they had the desks facing each other, where they did teamwork and that, those days rolled over for a while. So, I just wanna bring that to your attention, I don't know if that's something you wanna keep in the policy, if you wanna give us a little flexibility there, because we will be meeting with all administrators tomorrow to go over all of these policies, to tell them what our expectation is. And the six feet could change tomorrow. I wanna give you all the flexibility you need.
Redfield said several weeks ago, and Mr. Rea, you might have remembered it, he said six feet was a guideline, and he was kind of hedging, like, maybe five and a half feet would be okay. So, right after they said everybody's gotta open up, he kind of said that six feet was recommended, but, but so, and I'll just tell you right now, my daughter got into her classroom at the Cantor Middle yesterday, and she can take 24 kids and keep them six feet apart. She's already set it up. So, yeah, with removing some of that other stuff that they had, the displaced case, some of the other tables, that, you know, and her room is not very big, so if she can put 24 in them, I feel confident that we can keep these kids close to six feet apart.
All the rooms that we set up where every student's facing forward and those sorts of things, so I just wanted to...
My daughter went through every room at Home Assassin to make sure.
So, I wanna bring that to y'all's attention, because I don't want us to get locked into, backed into a corner where someone's a few inches under five feet or six feet.
So, I mean, I hear what you're saying is that we need to take the six feet minimum out, I mean, we talk about physical, social distancing, which we're gonna be adhering to, seeking, but we can't guarantee six feet.
Change the minimum to approximately.
Well, what about just taking the physical distancing, six-foot minimum, leave the maintain social distance, I mean, physical distance? Take, or keep the physical distance, remove the social distance and the six foot, meaning that it's, we're still saying to distance.
Right.
We're just not defining it, and we're, and again, social distancing tends to be thought of, I think, because of CDC, as six foot. So, if we're saying physical distancing, we're still saying maintaining a distance and federal for that, would that...
I'm good with that, if you all agree with that.
The only question I wonder, too, is we have "shall" at the beginning of that, the fourth word in, and I wondered if it, if there's a reason why it's "shall," or is there a reason it couldn't be in there?
I like "shall."
Shall means, you know, Ten Commandments.
Okay.
May is discretionary, "shall" is not.
If you're saying "shall," then I can live with "shall."
I don't know what...
He likes "shall."
Take "social" and then "six-foot minimum."
So, take out "six-foot minimum"?
And then also the word "social" and the slash, so it's just physical distancing.
So, we're just gonna say maintains physical distance, correct?
Mrs. Hamel, I'm sure that we're not gonna have a problem if we, if we take out the suggested six feet?
We're gonna maintain that, because again, those zombie classrooms will remain off, be able to maintain that, and then they'll have to wear their mask. Because if you know, we've got all different sizes.
So, distancing, I think you still want that word in there, don't worry.
Maintains physical...
Distancing.
And then, Mr. Bradshaw, I know we just finished H, but I know some want to come back to D. I did wanna come back to G as well.
Strenuous is what?
Yes, on strenuous physical activity. So, we're all, and we had talked about that, Mr. Bradshaw and I had, because, you know, I, you know, I wanted to make sure we knew what strenuous, what the definition of strenuous was. I know in the FAQs, for instance, recess is allowed, and that, I guess, would be called strenuous physical activity, is that right? I wanted, yeah, I just wanna make sure from superintendent that, you know, 'cause I thought, well, if we use the term strenuous, you know, is some play not strenuous?
I think that the reason is that I think you're gonna have a very hard time defining what physical activity requires a mask and what physical activity does not require a mask with some type of, you know, you know, excessive, strenuous, you know, whatever adjective that you wanna put in the front of it, because otherwise, you know, if it's just physical activity, then it does, you know, I'm walking, walking from class to class, so now that's not, that's just physical activity, I don't have to wear my mask. So, I think there needs to be some type of, and as we discussed, too, Mr. Dodd, you know, common sense is gonna have to prevail on some of this, you know, I can't write a policy that is going to cover, you know, every single minutia in the timeframe given. So, but if you, if you would like a better word than strenuous, that's fine.
Well, I guess, I just wanna make sure if students are gonna be able to go to recess without a mask on.
I would assume if they're engaged in strenuous physical activity, then yes. I would think if they're sitting, I would think if they're sitting in a circle and rolling a ball back and forth, they probably have to wear a mask. If they're kicking the ball up and down the field, they probably don't have to wear a mask, that's probably strenuous. I would define that as being strenuous.
Isn't that somewhat vague, though? I mean, what if one...
So is the word just physical activity?
No, I think it has to be defined.
Physical activity is like now, you know, if, you've got some smart kids and teachers and everything else that are gonna be out there, and they say, well, physical activity, you know, you know, they recommend walking, walking is a physical activity, I'm walking, I don't have to wear a mask, because now I'm walking.
Is a child swinging on a swing, is that strenuous physical activity?
It involves trial.
You know, I'll, I'll pass that off to people way more knowledgeable than me.
I just wanna make sure we're, you know, we're not, we're clear to parents on what to expect with...
I mean, I would think, I know back, I don't know what letter it was, B C, about the teacher making, having some authority. I think giving the teacher some authority to decide when they're going out and what those students are doing. I mean, if a student's just gonna, because recess really doesn't mean the kids have to be up playing. I mean, recess is pre-play for students, so if a student chooses to sit by a tree and read, there's no requirement saying that, because that's, that's what the law is, the student has that choice for pre-play to do what they wanna do.
Sometimes during recess, they sit on their new buddy benches.
Right, so...
But if there's two of them sitting at the tree, they gotta wear a mask.
They gotta wear a mask, because it's not strenuous, that's it.
So, I mean, I know in the plan, we basically focus on just not having multiple cohorts in a group together, trying to keep them separated. You know, this teacher's class is separate from the other teacher's, so we're not intermingling groups, and the students are to wash hands and use hand sanitizer. We didn't, again, address the mask issue in here, because we felt it would be one policy that would then encompass the whole, our whole plan.
My question about G, Mr. Bradshaw, is, is that also, does this give our staff, is that also to cover our staff's activities? Because it's, it's...
Yes, any person.
So, are the supervisors, you know, saying to them, you know, you're gonna be, I don't know what, I mean, you're working in the, right?
Yes, it's any person inside or outside.
So, it's, it doesn't just, in this case, G is not just covering our students, but it's also covering staff activities and...
Correct.
So, I think that was part of the, at least that's how I read it when I saw it, it was to cover recess, athletics, but it also covered activities of the worker.
If we're building a new dugout or something else, and the guys are out there, and they're laying block, I would consider that strenuous physical activity, they wouldn't have to wear a mask while they're doing it, so...
Are we talking about sports, some baseball, basketball?
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna look up what the definition of strenuous was.
It involves some type of straining.
Hence, strenuous.
I think strenuous is a, is a good adjective.
I think so, too. Leave it alone.
Okay. Anything else with, as far as that one's concerned? Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir. I want everybody, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's regres...
We did, we did talk about going in order, right?
We did. No one is, so I'm not...
Mrs. Hamel started, it's going backwards, it's her fault.
And in there, is there a social distancing or physical distancing in the meal time of this person? All of them coming without masks, sit there.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to socially distance during meals.
It's probably rearranging all the cafeterias where every child will sit on the same side in their row. They will not be six feet apart, but they'll all be facing the same direction.
I think, and it may be, that just may be logistics, too, Ms. Powers, I mean, you can't serve lunch starting at nine o'clock in the morning, so you can get eight, you can have five lunches in to get all the kids. Some of this is just do the best we can.
That's right.
My, my opinion, my, I give an opinion, y'all tell me what to do. And like I said, you know, if things aren't working out, we'll walk right back in here and change it again.
Yes.
So...
Yeah.
But it, but it is, it is, it's while such person is eating, so...
That makes sense, but I was thinking of sitting down and talking to each other, they're gonna do that, that, that involves distance, that requires...
Well, I don't think that's gonna give them the ability to sit there and after they're done eating, sit in a group and talk about their mask on. Once they're done eating, they need to put their mask back on.
So, you have the teacher or some other producer tell them the mask back on?
I, my understanding is that there's, when administrators and everything, there's gonna be plenty of meetings on what the expectations are.
And the other thing, too, is that we've, when we get to the reopening, we've gotta remember that we're dealing with the children that have signed up to come back to the brick and mortar school. And we've offered all of our children various options, they don't have to come back into our classrooms where they have to have this mask mandate. If they, if they really have an objection, then join campus virtual until we're through with this, and then come back to us. So, let's, I like the idea that this is 90 days, and we're gonna revisit it many times.
It is only 90 days, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw, would you explain, I know the board knows why, for the public who's watching, why there's a 90-day policy?
Because it's being adopted as an emergency rule, and, and because of, it has to be like an imminent danger to the health, safety, welfare, and so you can forego the, which this is, because we're about to have teachers back in the classrooms, students coming back, you know, you need this in place to be able to, to train teachers and get the expectations to be able to know, have them be able to explain it to the students of what our expectations are. And when you do that, you can adopt a policy under emergency conditions, and, but it limits the time period of the policy, so it's only, it'll expire 90 days, if, when you adopt this today, it'll expire 90 days from the day's date unless you renew it or go through the regular rulemaking policy.
Thanks for down-talking. I, aren't we?
Yes. I had no one have made any comments on I, unless, there is now, on J, exigent circumstances. The only person who made a comment regarding that was Mr. Dodd, who said that he wanted to, I believe, delete after or is personally unable to remove the mask without assistance and add, says, add, or is experiencing a medical emergency and then delete the remaining, is that correct, Mr. Dodd?
No, I wanted to delete this unconscious or incapacitated from that, so it just doesn't really fit. I mean, a face covering shall not be required if a person is experiencing acute trouble breathing, is unconscious or incapacitated. I think we all assume that if you're unconscious, you don't have to have a mask on. So, I think that it should say, a face covering shall not be required if a person is experiencing acute trouble breathing or is experiencing a medical emergency.
It'd take out conscious or unconscious?
Is unconscious or incapacitated or is personally unable to remove the mask without assistance, I think we take that out.
Well, experiencing a medical emergency would be a nice substitute for that deleted language.
Not a problem, so, is experiencing acute trouble breathing...
Or is experiencing...
Or is experiencing, experiencing a medical emergency. And then delete the remaining portion, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, four, you can see where I added other persons in there, into the title, which made it consistent. Commercially-produced surgical masks for respirators are acceptable compliance with this policy, but are not mandated, because I know, at the cloth face coverings, so it gives lots of leeway on what type of mask that you want to wear. You know, I'm kind of of the opinion that if, if they walk in there with a mask, you know, count that one as a win, and, you know, and a non, something we don't have to fight over, but, you know, the cloth face coverings, and there's a link there for this, to the CDC, which has a nice little tutorial on how to make your own, if you would like it. Give me another slide. Any, any changes, anything with that? Oh, sure.
Mr. Rubio sent this to me because he's had a lot of discussions about masks. Can you get Rubio's?
Paragraph five, limited face shield use. Obviously, the purpose of wearing a mask is so, you know, you wear it to protect others and yourself. Face shields obviously are not going to be as protective because the, the, you know, it's not restrict or filtering the air or stopping, you know, the particle, particles from coming in from the sides. But, you know, if you have a medical certification, um, there, for whatever reason, then we will do that. Obviously, you'll wear a face shield under those circumstances for instruction. I think that there will be times when teachers will need to be able to take off their mask and wear a face shield for instructional purposes. And then at the end there, um-
I assume be covered also if we had a student that needed to be able to read lips, that, that, that would be able, that would be covered.
Yes, yes.
I thought that's what it covered, but it just-
Yeah, we don't want to impair someone's ability to learn. So, but, but, you know, and then employees may use a face shield and dish until a mask. Students may use a face shield when it's determined by a healthcare provider is more appropriate than using a face covering. I know, I talked to Mr. Dodd about this one, about deleting the whole section.
Yeah, I think we talked about just that second sentence, right? Because it was covered, already covered on students may use a face shield. Didn't we say that was already covered in A?
Right, so it's delete, it's just deleting the second sentence out of there?
It was just deleting the second sentence, right.
Okay. I, you know, if someone wanted to wear a mask and a face shield, I don't think anyone would, at the same time, no one's going to. I can't imagine, I take that back, I don't want to say no one. I can't imagine that someone would give them too much trouble. Enforcement, the only, um, miscounts wanted to add, like including but not limited to insubordination, which is one of the, um, things that you can discipline an employee over. I don't have a problem with adding, with putting that, putting that in there. As long as it says including but not limited to, I think it gives a reference to something, tangent that they can look at and see what it is, but it doesn't limit to just an insubordination. Because it could be misconduct in office, there's other things, you know, misconduct in office is also violating the school rules. So if, if no, if no one has an objection, I will put, I can put that in there.
Yeah, and I did have some parents reach out to me and most recently today, a father wanted to make sure that we were going to be able to enforce the policy and asked us, you know, how that, what would that look like and, uh-
The same as any other employee discipline matter.
And I think what was relayed to me was, you know, the fear that it'll be, you know, up to students if they're in the hallway, school, between classes, and if some of them just don't wear their mask, is anyone going to be there, police at, to look for that?
Are, are we talking about student discipline or employee discipline?
I'm talking about student, I'm talking about student.
Okay, if students-
We were talking about employees, I got you, yes.
Okay. I think that the, the thing as far as students are concerned is that if they refuse and keep refusing to wear them, then you administratively assign them to your remote learning or citrus virtual.
Right. That was, I mean, just the concern of the, they want their child to be back in brick and mortar.
Right.
But they want to make sure that if masks are going to be required-
That everybody wears a mask.
Everybody wears a mask.
Correct. Absolutely. I, I would anticipate that, you know, you're going to have, your students are going to wear a mask and you're going to have some that aren't going to wear a mask. And, you know, instead of expelling them or going down that avenue, you know, you assign them, you assign them to our virtual program and they can, you know, we make you wear a shirt when you come to school, we make you wear a mask when you come to school. And if you don't like it, you go home and sit shirtless and do virtual school, so.
I think in the end though, we're, it's, it's like every other policy, code of conduct issue or employee discipline, there's a due process, there's a process that goes through.
Absolutely.
And that's going to be no different than any other rule that they would break. They would go through disciplinary action all the way up.
I anticipated it being a long process of trying to work with someone to comply and if they have a reason why, to work through those reasons and, and trying to make sure, you know, that we do everything right before we would ever get down to the part of wanting to discipline an employee over it, you know, or, or a student, probably absent just, I flat out, you know, I'm coming to school and you're not wearing anything. You know, then that's a, you know, that's basically an ultimatum. And when you make an ultimatum, you already made your choice, so once you're, you know, what's going to happen. So, except for those circumstances, there, it'll be a lot of, you know, we need to try to work, work, work with people to do this.
And one, one of our employees asked me about, she's got severe asthma condition and, but, but I said, then you need a medical certificate.
We get it, right.
We've got that covered, so I-
Absolutely, there are exceptions to it. Exceptions to it.
But she was also wearing a mask.
Ma'am?
She was also wearing a mask.
Right, right.
Yeah, the question-
She needs to take it off if it's too wild.
There are enforcement procedures built in, right, to be able, to be able to do it.
The questions that I've asked haven't had anything to do with employees. It all had to do with students who are not, you know, who may not work.
Right.
I haven't had anyone ask me in the-
About employees, yes, but students also. I mean, you know, it's something that, you know, you could get down to having to expel someone if they kept coming back and back and back, you know, but I think you just reassign them to virtual school as, you know, it's kind of like when students get reassigned to one of our behavior schools because you won't follow the rules.
Right. And we have, we've purchased a lot of masks. Obviously, if the child doesn't have a mask and, you know, here's your mask, you need to put your mask on.
Right.
We can do that and we will. And that's some of the things I'm trying to reassure the parents I've spoken to about this, that, you know, we're going to put the policy in place, an emergency policy, and then it will be enforced.
I forgot my mask, um, I can't afford a mask.
The dog ate my mask.
Are, are all handled by, we have plenty of masks.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Dodd, and I just wanted to let you all know that as of yesterday, the Chamber of Commerce has handed out 515 masks to kids. They have come by there to get them, so people are starting to-
Thank you.
Can I just ask on the, on the student one, is, we are not using that term remote learning. If we could just change that to virtual option and then that, that's really what we're offering, whether it's an innovative learning plan, if you use the word virtual option, then that covers us.
How's that? Via a virtual option?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And, anything else? Two things I want to talk to you about too is, you know, there, there's, if you go on the internet, look, there are a plethora of masks out there. Some are cute, some are obscene, you know. So I, personally, I, I would take it that, you know, it's the same as wearing a shirt that has something that is offensive or drug or alcohol related or anything else. That's going to be a dress code kind of issue and will make you take it off and put another one on. So, because, you know, maybe get a little invalid pushing going on there. The other thing, and I know that not everybody was in the room, but I want to cover this in case that you don't know, that there was a lawsuit filed in Palm Beach County by some individuals against the, against Palm Beach County for their mask ordinance. And the, it is a circuit court opinion, so it's, uh, it's basically like getting an opinion out of one of our judges here, but it's a very well-written opinion that goes through step by step and talks about how during times of public emergencies and things like this, that you are, you know, there's a Supreme Court case that says that, you know, that they can make people get vaccinated for smallpox. And so it lays out very nicely the ability and the authority that, that you have to be able to do things like this. Because we had talked to some Mr. Kennedy about, you know, you know, legally. It was, you know, it's, obviously their ordinance is probably going to be a little different, but the, the, the underlying holding is that during times like these, you have the, you know, the authority to do this.
And I, and I would agree and I appreciate you sharing it. I don't believe that opinion though has to do with the school system.
It does not.
And, and it didn't address particularly faith in that. And I, and I'm not saying that that would change it, but that does, as you would, you've reminded us in the past, sometimes there are differences, but it definitely, it looked like it was, it was laying the groundwork.
It is a much better opinion than we're going to enjoy them from making you wear a mask.
Agreed.
With, with what's going on here, so. So, all right, well then, what I will do is, um-
Did you need, Dirk, did you need a formal action at this time?
Yes, so I need a formal vote on the adoption of COVID-19 emergency poli, policy, excuse me, hyphen face coverings, 3.232.
Move approval with, uh-
With the, um-
With changes as discussed during this meeting.
Sir, I have a motion of Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve the adoption of policy 3.232 COVID-19 emergency policy face coverings. Any more discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
And we have a second one for your, um-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there's the, hang on, I'll go.
The second one was the second thing that we got last week, the written statement.
Right. So when you do an emergency rule there, you have to have a written purpose. Oh my gosh, no, hopefully I can find it, there it is.
Say, I've got a copy if you need it.
No, I'm good. So, stand up here and I fucking know what I'm doing. So, so you need a written statement that's of why you are adopting an emergency rules. So because obviously when you're bypassing some of the rulemaking provisions, you need to be on sound ground. And so I've laid out in here why you're doing it, including up to last week, as of July 21st, you know, there was 369,834 cases in Florida and 874 cases in, in Citrus County. I know that, I think as of the day, we're over 1,000 cases. I think we're past 275 deaths or something.
Rubio, she can say it here.
Something along, something along those lines. I think that it's, you know, that, I, I don't keep up with this on a daily, daily basis. I probably should, I know like on Saturday, there were over 12,000 new cases in the state of Florida. So you need, that's why I just, I, I do a statement like this so that you have a written reason of why you're, you're taking this action.
And do we need to, do we need to go on that?
If you would approve it, yes, ma'am, and then that way it'll go along with the policy.
I move to approve the written statement pursuant to Florida statutes 0.120, 0.54, begin for N4, end for N4, begin for N8, end for N8, regarding emergency adoption of school board policy 3.232.
It must be the chair, Ms. Bryant, to get this her.
What's that with the chair?
That's where I sit and I have to go through that.
Since I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve the written statement pursuant to FS 120.544A regarding emergency adoptions school board policy 3.232. Any other discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw, that was, thank you, a lot of work. It's okay.
Thank you, board, too.
I know that we have a lot of staff, I can't, I can't imagine, we got to be, we got to have a, a thank you luncheon for everybody as soon as this is over because we didn't get to do our spring luncheon.
No, we may not.
So we, hopefully we can do the Christmas lights on player.
Thank you.
Okay. This is our new board that we added to the agenda, school surfaces, services, Ms. Rain is approaching the podium.
Good afternoon. I have some good news, I love good news. So the first item I have is I ask the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations as listed on the golden rod.
Everybody got good news.
I'm looking to approve the personal recommendations on the golden rod.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the personnel and support recommendations on the golden rod. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Golden rod is accepted 5-0.
Thank you. Second item is that I ask the board's approval for Bart Adams to be named principal of virtual school with a start date of July 29th, 2020, which is tomorrow.
We have approval.
Did you get a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Bart Adams as middle school principal of Citrus Virtual School effective July 29th, 2020. And Mr. Adams is in our audience. We got a vote, she is.
Oh.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, I'm going to initiate Forest Ridge.
Great choice.
Third agenda item is I ask the board's approval for Sean Ear to be named assistant principal of Forest Ridge Elementary with a start date of July 29th, 2020.
I'll make the motion to approve Sean Ear as assistant principal of Forest Ridge Elementary effective July 29th, 2020. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Mr. Sean Ear as assistant principal of Forest Ridge Elementary School effective July 29th, 2020. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Now, is that all, that's all the good news?
That's good, really good news, so, yes. Yes, I think some ed services and some HR staff are very happy to have a principal along with a, within the assistant principal of virtual school when we're hitting 3,000.
Yeah, and we have to understand that those first numbers started off like at 500, 600, then it was 700, 800, then it was 5,000. And we've got our, another adjunct school system right here, so we kind of expected this. And, and thank you, Powell, for stepping up this virtual school.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business to come before the special meeting? If not, I'm going to adjourn the special meeting. We'll take a break and we'll come back for a workshop. In five minutes or 10 minutes, guys?
10.
10 minutes. Okay, we'll be in 10 minutes.